Okay, it's six thirty, so I'll call to order the work session for City of Tenino, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And to be honest with you, I don't have a lot of stuff to talk about. Would you mind, library representatives here, can she give a report?
Right away.
If you wanted us to do, did you have anything to talk about?
I was just, Linda had a family in the city, so she wasn't able to attend, so I'm.
Did you have anything you wanted to talk?
Don't you want to introduce yourself?
Sure.
You gotta come up here and do the microphone. We have to be able to hear you.
Thank you.
Is there a light, is there a green light on?
Yes, can you hear me? Am I good, it's green?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. I'm Brenda Cameron, I'm the new regional manager for Timberland Library. And I'm excited to be here. I would like to share most recently that I've reached out to Tenino's school districts. And I've had a really positive response from the elementary school. So we've already met with a few teachers and we're trying to get ahold of all the third graders coming in and at least annually getting there, making sure they have access to library materials and whatever else we can do for the schools. So, thank you for letting me come tonight.
How's that open, since you're here, how's the open library, or I don't know, maybe you have a name for it, where people can come in at different hours, is that working okay, or are you still doing that?
Yes. A few people have been taking advantage of that, not as many as we would like. So I'd like to get that promoted in the community as well, with the extended hours for them. Especially with the computer use.
Yeah. Say, come to the Chamber of Commerce meeting tomorrow, you can get the word out to more people.
We have our chamber meeting, it's out at the Ag Park tomorrow at noon. Chamber of Commerce.
Ag Park tomorrow at noon, Chamber.
If you can make it.
Got it.
They're every month, so if you can't make it, just this one.
I met her at the study meeting, she was at the last study meeting.
We sat, Linda and I sat next to each other, so. Okay, well, thank you.
Nice, thanks for coming in, and you're welcome to stay if you'd like to, but I don't like people just having to sit here if they don't wanna, don't want to, so.
I appreciate that.
Feel free to leave if you would like.
Thank you. And I can go out that way?
This way or the front?
Are the stairs better this way?
Yeah. Are you parked back here?
Yes.
I hope you're not parked, what?
There's a ramp.
Ooh, ooh, ooh. I know, but I hope you're not, I hope you're not parked. I hope I'm not parked behind you, what do you drive?
A little green monster.
I'll be darned.
I parked right next to her.
She's in the handicaps. Okay, good, alright, I probably blocked some at the end, I didn't know who it was.
It's not me.
Okay, bye, thank you.
Just land your horn if you can't get out, somebody will come running.
I'll just run back up. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
So I can, we can open it up for discussion since we don't have a lot to talk about. I would just say that pretty much everything we've been doing since our last meeting has been working on our audit. I think we got a little bit, what, you think in a couple, two or three more weeks maybe to get this final audit done, did you say, earlier? Something around there, but.
Yeah, assuming that I have a comment.
Yeah. So anyway, that's taken a bit of time, but I think it's much easier than the prior ones have been, even though it still takes time.
Well, it's been a week in between.
Yeah. So that's ongoing. Tomorrow Nancy and I are gonna sit down and go over some budget stuff, so we'll have a budget presentation. When's our first one coming up?
I'm sorry, I haven't looked at the calendar.
Yeah. We do have a presentation on revenues, I think is the first one we do, so that'll be coming up soon.
It's either the next one or the first one ever when I cancel.
When do we do the Ad Calorum?
I'm sorry?
The Ad Calorum.
That's that form we're talking about, you have to fill out, that is probably right, right after, I don't remember the schedule.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't bring the schedule.
What else has been the big things? Been to, went to another grand opening today down at the.
Oh, wasn't that great?
That was nice, yeah.
That was a great grand opening.
Yeah.
We are, they have, what, what was it?
The biggest multi?
Biggest multi-advisors office in the state of Washington.
Across the nation.
Across the nation, yeah, in the nation.
You also got pictures of that.
There's a lot of photographers there.
Because today was production day.
Get a hold of George.
I hope they will get up.
Get a hold of George, George will have pictures.
George Sharp, I can send him a note if you'd want to, to send you some pictures.
I'll add, of course.
Yeah, so that was a nice event, there was quite a few people there.
Oh, yeah.
It was a.
They had a representative from New York come out, yeah, it was something.
Yeah.
Cause this is the first.
Hometown boy.
What?
Hometown boy.
Yeah. This was the first of its kind, so. And they, none of them thought it was a very good idea at first.
Yeah, had to convince them to let them, let them do this. So that was exciting to see, like I said, that whole corner there when you come into town is just, looks so nice now compared. There was nothing there before, it was just land, but it looks nice having a building, now the landscaping, right, as you come into town, it's really kind of the first thing you see, so I think it's kind of a big improvement for our community.
I was shocked that you didn't say that.
I did.
Well, not very loud, cause you didn't hear when somebody called it a town. I said I was waiting, I told Elaine, I said, I can't believe John didn't say "City!"
I did, people around me heard.
Let's see. Guess we can just do reports and then if anything comes up after reports, we can.
Are we, are, do, did we send out notices that we'd be hiring another clerk?
Yeah.
A part-time.
We just closed it.
Part-time.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Oh, yeah.
It's closed.
Yeah, we closed it.
Just part-time?
Yeah, just part-time and probably not permanent.
Part-time for, probably. Just to kind of catch up on some of the filing and stuff that's got sold behind us.
Okay, and not, okay. And you, you hired somebody?
No.
No. We have about seven applications, I think.
Yeah, there's quite a few, I was kind of surprised for a part-time.
We need to go through and I guess pick the top three and do some interviews. So.
Okay.
Okay, let's just do reports. Chamber and EDC, I did get a note from, let me get to my, wasn't much on it, just talked about the next study meeting and. Now George says, Chamber lunch forum is tomorrow at noon at the Stone, Stone City Event Center, which we just said, Clint Endicott is the speaker. The next EDC event is the Regional Expo, December fourth at Great Wolf Lodge. And then study meeting is this Friday, October seventeenth, eight AM to nine thirty at the BuCota Gym. So that was what I got from George. Library, she gave her report, Civil Service Commission, I don't think they've met, Finance Committee, we were gonna meet today, but Elaine is sick today, so.
Linda lost her nine.
Yeah. So we didn't have a Finance Committee, but we will try to get that on the schedule again for, probably before our next meeting, maybe we should try to have a.
What's that?
A Finance Committee meeting, just before we.
It's not what we're gonna do at the council meeting.
I know, but I'm just saying since we missed it, maybe, I don't know, we wanna.
That's it, you wanna have it at the next council meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Well, let's, yeah, the Finance Committee, uh, Finance Committee?
Yeah.
See how Elaine is doing, I think.
See how Elaine's doing, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can have a.
I mean, it's two weeks from now, so.
Yeah, hopefully she'll be better then.
How's the budget coming along?
Planning Commission, Adam, do you have anything to report? I know there's not, hasn't been much.
I can't, I can't hear you.
How is, how is the budget coming along?
It, it's coming.
Cause we're running out of time.
Yeah.
We got a schedule. We got a schedule.
They, they sent us the schedule. Course you don't get email.
I tried to remember to send it to your personal email, but.
Oh, you don't have an email?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work?
No.
Okay.
So why don't you stop down at City Hall and we'll give you a hard copy.
Can you stop by tomorrow?
Oh, you, the preliminary budget is already set?
No.
Uh, the calendar is?
I don't need the calendar, I need the budget.
Well.
Well, she wants to let you know when we're gonna do the budget.
I think our next meeting is, are we review the, uh, review the.
Ad Calorum?
Yeah. So our next meeting will kind of be our first review of the revenues.
There you go.
It might be in November eleven, because I remember, that's why we questioned whether we were gonna be counseling them or not, but we could be right, it'll be the next one.
Well, it almost has to be, cause we only have three more, we have four more meetings before the end of the year. October two and November one and December, so we, we just about have to have it by next week, next two weeks.
Okay. Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, okay.
I can report on the Arch Commission.
Oh, did you have Arch? Okay.
We had a meeting and, and it went really well, actually, we have several projects that we're looking at. One is to have is to apply for grants, one is for garbage cans, big heavy duty garbage cans, four of them for the downtown area. Like two at this end and two at that end of the street, maybe six at either end of the blocks, and then have them wrapped with local art.
Oh, that'd be cool.
And the other one is to build a big wooden beaver out of reclaimed wood scraps. Has anybody seen the, what are those called? The trolls, the trolls, like that, like the trolls, only a beaver. So those are the two projects that we identified that we'd kind of like to see.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Speaking of that type of stuff, have we taken a look at the hammering you man out here, cause he's splitting again?
Yeah.
Oh?
I mentioned it to Troy, so, yeah, you're gonna have to have some more repair work, or preservation work, or whatever they call it.
Okay.
All right.
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission now. Yeah, really the only thing to report is that we are continuing the public hearing on November twelfth. We did not meet this month, October, so we'll continue with the public hearing. There were a couple of things on the, on the comprehensive plan that we were like, oh, we'd like to see that in a finalized form, as finalized as we can get it during a public hearing. So, as soon as we got that, we'll continue that in November.
So we'll have it the first meeting, so we can have our public hearings the first.
So, so, I, so I pushed this at the last, at the last meeting, I was like, so this is gonna be done by the end of the year, right? And they were like, well, it doesn't have to be done by the end of the year. So, I believe.
What do you mean it doesn't have to be done?
It'll be the first one, and I've been here since ninety-five, that was not done before the end of the year.
And that may be the case.
What?
That may, that may be the case, that it's not through the city council by the end of the year. I'm not sure.
I thought it had to be.
Yes, it does.
I was, I asked the question, does it need to be, so you're telling me it doesn't need to be passed by the end of the year? And they're like, yeah, no, we can, there's no big component of the comprehensive plan that has to be through by law.
I think we need to look at the RCW's on that.
Yeah, who told you that?
I asked the planner.
Really?
Yeah.
What planner?
Our planner, I mean.
Because we've always, always had to have it done on our last meeting in December.
Yeah, well.
And it wasn't, it wasn't, well, we can put it off till the first meeting, it's, we had to.
Yeah.
It would be nice to, it was a had to.
Hmm.
Well, I think what we need to do is just back up and look at the RCW and find out.
Yeah.
I'll look at it.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thanks then.
Thank you.
Public Safety Committee, guys.
No, but he's here for that.
Nope, nothing.
Public Works. We did have a meeting today, I was trying to think of anything, the chief talked about, I guess the new officer is working out okay, she's still on her, her training time, basically. She said it's gonna be a little bit longer, she was pretty green, so she didn't want to just, with our low call volume, she wanted her to spend some more time, get us out there with other officers before we put her out there by herself, so. That'll be a little longer than normal, but she, he said everything is, seems to be going well with that. They're working on the grant for the state, that hundred million that the, he seems very positive about that.
Yeah, he did, he called me.
They've already, I think, sent in some preliminary information to him, for him to review before the final draft gets online, so. He seemed to be very positive that we would get some kind of, you know.
Yeah, he said, he told me that they, they're really wanting to get this thing going.
They want to get it out there.
They want to get it going, SCJ, I mean, whatever it is.
SCJTC.
Whatever it is, that place, that place.
Whatever.
Those letters.
So that was good. One of the things with the police department, his truck is starting to cost us more than the things worth. Yeah, so we're gonna have to look next year and trying to find, he's gonna start looking around, see if he can find a used vehicle that may be sufficient for us.
Yeah, he's talking to our emergency vehicle services, they have that demo one.
Yeah.
Were you in there when he was talking about that?
Yeah, he knows somebody that has a demo, demo, somebody that builds, you know, police vehicles that has a demo that's pretty low miles. So he's gonna talk to them and see if we can, what kind of deal we can maybe make with them, but anyway, we'll be looking for a replacement vehicle. We do have a fourth one that's kind of a spare right now, but, yeah.
Tom Waters, I've assisted the city and received a lot of help from them on that.
Yeah, they did, a while back, they were getting rid of a bunch of cars, but I don't know if they are currently, so I know he looked at that when they, last time they had.
In Japan.
Well, I noticed a long distance, you have to get.
Longer. So anyway, we'll keep an eye out and see what.
Well, and when it starts dolering again to death, you know, it's just time to bite the bullet.
Public Works, the things, the biggest one we talked about, I believe, was the screens out, out at the wastewater treatment plant. I think you all know that story, that I think when we, I originally started, they were supposed to last like for ten years or something, I think he said it's been close to twenty years now, but those things have lasted. And they're, they're basically been patched together for some time, and so, you know, we've been spending quite a bit of money already just doing, doing engineering.
Two thousand seventeen and then they were.
Been going for a while then.
Yeah, yeah.
So anyway, I think we're looking at a million plus dollars, when I said a million dollars, she says, eh, it may be a little more than that, and we have applied to Ecology for a grant, that they have emergency grants, so we've applied for that. I just got a notice the other day that it's been accepted and was on time, so hopefully shortly we will hear on, what's going on with that. Out there replacing some street signs today, I saw that they were out doing that. We're trying to do some code enforcement things, there's a couple places in town that are pretty, getting pretty nasty, so I think our first step was to get, Jason's been trying to contact him and get him to take some action. But I know one of them has been a mess for a while that he's been talking about, so if that doesn't work, we'll have to kind of up the, up the ante on that one. I think those were. Oh, yeah, the bus stop is another little bit, a bit small issue, you know, sometime back, they were stopping by the library there and so people were complaining. So we, somebody who worked with TRPC and they set up that stop kind of down there by that little triangle where we were talking about putting a dog park at one time. So they put that gravel down, but apparently it doesn't need any ADA stands, of course.
Well, it really doesn't, too, I would have trouble getting from the ground, um, just for a step.
And it's not wide enough when they put their, when they put their lift down, so.
Yeah, the cost of that.
To pave it and make it ADA compliant, so we're gonna have a, I'm gonna, I did, started a email to TRPC, but I didn't get it finished.
I thought they were up here by the park.
Well, that's what Troy says, why don't we just have them by the park when there's party?
Yeah, that's where they should be.
So anyway, we're gonna have to, have to figure out how to resolve that issue. Okay, Chief of Police, I kind of already talked, and Public Works Director, Code Enforcement Building Inspector. I haven't heard anything new lately. What's going on with the code enforcement, any issues with that? Seems to be going okay. I know the, I did talk to Jody the other day and Linda came in too. Their, the food banks are really struggling, I just think overall, because their, some of their funding is kind of going away with the shutdown, and also they've had a pretty large increase, I think they said, she said last time they served ninety-five families, that's families, that's not people, in one day. So, in addition to being overwhelmed with, you know, requests for assistance, they're financially, I think they're, and so it's kind of really affecting down there, you know, when they have to come in and get a permit and cost them five hundred dollars and some other thing, engineering stuff that they mentioned, so I'm gonna.
That was separate though, I thought that, I think that's separate from their food bank money.
Oh, yeah, they probably have some grant money, I think they got to do some work, but.
But I think the problem that, that, and not being able to get the permits is the financing through whatever bank.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that they don't want to touch them unless they know that they're gonna have the proper permit and things, so.
But one of the things was like, for example, just so you guys kind of know what's going on, one of the things is the gas line.
Yeah.
Whoever's in there before kind of just did things on their own, I don't, didn't think they got permits for them, so some of the things they're facing now.
Probably not.
They're having to repair, because now they gotta bring it up to code, you know? And especially with the food bank, they gotta meet all the Washington State, like Department of Agriculture guidelines, which are pretty strict, so they gotta make sure everything's up to snuff with their inspectors.
They're, they have to get. Their building permit does not include the paths they've gotta have to put these propane tanks on. So they're having to buy a separate permit for that.
Yeah, so that's example, I mean, is they're gonna have to get a permit to do the gas lines and stuff.
Gas line, yeah.
And after talking about it, I kind of understand a little bit, because that is a huge public, you know, a gas line is a, a big hazard, and so to make sure, I know everybody thinks that does gas lines, they could throw it in there and it would be safe, but our inspector can't just say, oh, go ahead and do it and, you know, hopefully nothing happens, because if anything did happen, he would be liable, so I can see both sides of the story, where you want to get things done efficiently and quickly.
But I think that, I think it's the cost of the permit that we're talking about.
Yeah.
You could still go there and make sure it was all done right, without adding an extra cost for three cement paths to go down over and above the building permit, you see, that's my hole, why should they have to have a separate one for that? So, I don't know, I don't know.
So anyway, I told Jody I'd work, we'll work with her and see if we can figure out a way to, to get them, get them moving down the road, but we can't eat the cost of it either, you know, so we're kind of in the same spot as they are, so. Anyway, well, I'll work with her and try to, try to get things going and make it as easy as possible. Park Specialist isn't here.
How, how are we coming along with the, the paid board for sale on that building for them?
For them.
That's, that's part of what we're talking about.
Uh, it's already in the contract, I mean, they can say they want to buy it at any time, it's just a matter of getting the financing and when they get to a spot, they can, I think that's what she was saying about a loan, it has to be up to code and, you know, all those kind of things to get a loan, so. I think that's, yeah, and with their situation right now, I think they're kind of.
Yeah, we've already got a contract with them.
So it's, it was part of the original contract, the lease we gave, signed with them was the option to buy when they were ready, so. Any, Clerk Treasure? Probably talked about everything you were gonna say.
Yeah, pretty much. So, the budget is coming along. When you ask how it's going, it depends on what you mean by that, because it's not going to be pretty next year, it's just not.
It was great as last year, but we have, there's a timeline that we have to have that.
I, I understand that.
That's why, stop tomorrow and they'll give you a hard copy of what, cause it's, she's got it all laid out, when we're gonna.
Um, I, I didn't know that you didn't receive emails, so I can print one out for you and we can have it, or, I don't know where.
I can send it to us, I can send it to your regular email, to you.
I don't think they get it at all, do you, any email?
Because you guys never.
Do you have your own personal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you like me to send a copy to them?
Yes, thank you. Link in the, I don't have a damn link.
I have it, see?
She's got it.
Oh, okay, I can forward it to you.
I do too.
So, as the mayor said, we're getting together this week to try and get the rest of the budget numbers in, but we're gonna have to do a lot of cuts for next year, unfortunately, if we want to be able to balance our budget. So, there's a lot of work to be done on that. What else, working on the twenty twenty-four audit, working on budget. IRS is back again, like a bad penny.
You just sent the money.
They unapplied some of our payments from twenty twenty-three and sent us a letter saying we have a credit of twenty-some thousand dollars. And then when I called them, they said, well, you don't, you didn't pay third and fourth quarter of twenty-three, and I told them, well, last time I called them.
That was all.
That was balanced. Oh, well, you have these outstanding credits, so I'm not quite sure what to do at this point, but we're still working on that, so. And we, but the last guy I talked to said, there's a form we can fill out to request either the fines or the penalties be removed, so. Maybe we'll save some money there. I'm not quite sure what to say about that.
Are you still able to go to the Olympia office and talk to somebody?
You know, I don't know, I don't know.
Cause I know we used to be able to, we, our hotline office was here and it was down here in the same building on Seventh and Adams.
I think that may be a different department though, because this is our nine forty-one's, this isn't.
I don't think it makes any difference.
Oh, well, I can, I mean, I can see if they're still.
They're probably not even open now with the shutdown.
Yeah, well, probably, you're probably right.
May open up again, there goes, but, yeah, right now.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know.
I don't envy you working with them, I had to work with them many years ago.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure why they unapplied our payments for, I mean, they still had the money, they just took them away from those two quarters, so I'm not sure what, why. I'm not.
It's a trap.
Right. I, I just hope they don't send us a check for that amount.
Yeah.
The last.
Then tell us we're late.
Talked to him last, I asked him to reapply those to that, in those quarters, so.
It might bounce anyway.
Right now.
It's, every time I call him, it's a different story. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but the W twos for twenty twenty-four were not filed. They are now filed. I, I, they were due in January, I started in May, that's all I'm gonna say. And they've been filed, so we had a couple of employees that had a little bit of trouble with their tax returns, with their refunds, so hopefully that.
Well, that would be for twenty-three, oh, for twenty-four, okay.
Twenty-four, yeah. So, like I told Troy this morning, this is twenty-five.
It is twenty-five, isn't it?
He said, ah.
Uh, let's see, Jessica's got a couple of grants we're pretty sure about, though, the one for the property up top and then the ball fields and stuff, and then there was one more, and I'm sorry, I didn't write it down and I can't remember.
Sports court, the basketball court and the pickleball court.
Yeah.
Pickleball court.
Um, I can't really think of anything else.
Oh, and there's, I forgot to mention too, there's a, there's a guy, a teacher at the middle school that wants to do frisbee golf.
Oh, yeah, she had talked to somebody about that, I don't know, he, was it him?
Disc golf. It was the guy from, yeah, and, and he went in and talked to Joyce about maybe selling, her selling the discs, cause you've got the court up there, you know, they have to bring their own discs.
I know she talked to him, but I don't, I don't remember her saying kind of any further contact, that was, that was some time ago, but, so.
Yeah. That was quite a while back.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of anything else, I think those are the big ones.
Yeah, that's all I can think of, does anybody have any questions?
Oh, free part, the financial report, I gotta get you on that.
Yeah, September is not reconciled yet, and everybody else got an email, the reason being is that we have a transaction with Department of Retirement Services that is not reconciling. And we're not quite sure if that's on us or on them, so I have to do some reconciling, but every one of these problems takes away, time away from the other problems that, or things, I should say, that I have to work on or that we have to work on, so.
We'll get it, next meeting we'll bring the reconciliation for, hopefully, if that gets resolved.
Yeah, we should be, we should, we should be done by then, with September, yeah, unfortunately.
But we probably should let you know her friend was late.
That one's gonna be late. But I did include our budget position in the packet that I sent out and all the bank statements, so if you have any questions, let me know.
Yeah, yeah.
Do they have any other questions? And yes, there is asphalt in the budget for potholes. You asked about that last time.
What?
Asphalt, Troy put asphalt in his budget, John last meeting was.
There's asphalt in there every year.
I, I haven't been to a meeting since August. I, I haven't been to a meeting since August.
We, uh, John was wanting to make sure we got asphalt to repair, uh, potholes in our budget.
Yes.
Oh, good.
You saw Troy.
I don't know if it's in that or not, but it's in there.
You think you could put a little article in the paper, just reminding everybody it's the season, potholes are gonna come up. We're gonna get them as filled as quick as we can, something along those lines. Thank you.
Um, yes, yes.
Jeff hasn't shown up yet, so I got him, I got him hooked up, so we'll see if he shows up, but he's not, uh, so far hasn't.
There's no questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Mayor, I went to the, uh, mayor's conference in, where was it? Wenatchee?
Yes.
I tried, I had to think. I've been to a couple of ones. I had to think where I was at for that one. Mayor's Conference, that was a good one. Uh, they had some presentations on budget and just city management, uh, kind of basically just a roundtable discussion with mayors from various, uh, cities around the state. One of the interesting ones that, why we were there, uh, the city of Cleelum and, uh, what's that little town right near Cleelum that had the movie that was based on Roslin?
Roslin.
They got a notice from the state saying they use surface water for their water in both those communities. Out of the blue, with no notification, saying you need to shut, you can't draw any more water from your surface water sources. They said because of the flow in the Yakama was below a certain point and there's. And so they were like, what are we supposed to do? We have no, we have no other source for water. Cleelum, oh, go ahead. Cleelum apparently has some wells they can use, but, uh.
It was on the news the other day.
Was it on there too?
Something about the farm that they were, yeah.
So, yeah, so they're, during most of the meeting, they were on the phone with their attorneys trying to figure out how they're gonna get, I mean, how can you just stop serving? But I, I just kind of feel like that's gonna start happening more as you get, you know, we're getting less runoffs and stuff. But, uh, it was kind of, it's kind of scary for, uh, communities just to get a, out of the blue from the state saying, you can't use any more water.
It just boggles my mind that we live in a state that has so much rain and so much.
There's not enough water.
Water, that we are having trouble with water, you know, that just, it's like in Arizona and California.
Rain, rain everywhere and another drop to drink.
Uh, and of course, just like every other, one of these we go to, budgets are on people's minds now and everybody's, everybody's facing a lot of the same issues with their budgets. And so it's a struggle for a lot of cities to match their revenues with, uh, with the expenditures they need. So it's kind of the same story that you hear at a lot of these. I then also went to the RMSA, uh, meeting. That's our insurance pool. Every year they have a meeting. Uh, by us attending, we got a seven hundred and fifty dollar scholarship that I don't know if you've seen anything from them yet, but we get a, a little scholarship that we can use. I think in the past we got some cameras, some of the cameras that we put up.
Oh, great.
I think we're gonna try to do some lighting outside the front door of the city hall and on the side there.
I think you want to do it at, at the quarry house, please.
Quarry house, too.
In the front. That is treacherous.
Yeah, seven hundred and fifty should get us three lights. If there's power out there.
Serious.
Well, it depends on if there's already a power there.
There will be, there is in front of the quarry house. It's just that the lighting is so poor. It's so poor there.
So we'll look at, we'll look at using, maybe using that for something there also, but anyway, that was just basically talking about our, uh, RMSA and what's, what their latest things are. We did get an award for the second year, an award, uh, grow for, uh, for our, no claims, basically. So we've got a nice little plaque saying, uh, thank you for your diligence.
Thank you for your money. We don't have to give you any back.
Uh, talking about rates for RMSA, I was expecting that, that to be one where we're gonna, we were gonna see another ten percent increase or something ridiculous. But we actually got a minus two point six percent in rate.
Yay.
They, they raised their rates four percent, but because of our claims history, we went down versus going up.
That's great.
So it's not a huge amount of money for us, but it's, we're moving in the right direction. It's two hundred and something thousand dollars for our, just for our insurance.
Yeah, I think it's like seven thousand last time I checked, or maybe two thirty five, but maybe that was a budget.
But anyway, that was nice to, nice to get that little, little bit of, uh. Our insurance rates for medical insurance are going up like almost nine percent for one of them and eleven percent for the other one. So that's gonna be an increase for us. That's, uh, Regent's is going up right about nine and then Kaiser is eleven percent, I believe, is, if I remember right. So we are gonna see some increases there. Uh, I kind of, I was, I was thinking it's gonna be more than that, actually, just with all the health insurers talking, you know, about rates going up crazy amounts, so it's still a lot, but, uh, not quite what I expected. So until those two things, been, I've been, before Nancy and I met, I've been going over the budget and just kind of scoping out what, or looking at what I think is, you know, on our revenue sides and expenditure sides where we can, where we're gonna be, so kind of to help prepare for that. Uh, and then, was there something else? I went to the, I mentioned already, went to the grand opening today, which is great. And we've had a lot of them, haven't we? Seems like we've been to like four or five just in the last month or so.
How many we had last month, Joyce?
Like three or four.
Three or four in September and now we've had two in October already, I think.
So that's good for our community to see those, uh, like, you know, some of them have been open for a bit, but.
And they're going, they're gonna be, you know, they're opening tomorrow, seventeen seventy six.
Yeah.
It's their open house tomorrow. But it's not, we're not doing a ribbon cutting, but.
Yes, opening up.
Yeah.
Uh, we've been talking to the Colvins a bit and more about the, 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 uh, meat processing facility out there. We haven't had a formal sit down yet, but I think they're gonna be, we told them when they're ready to, to start talking about the details, let us know. So hopefully we'll get that moving forward. See exactly. I've heard some rumors here and there, but I haven't talked to them directly, so I don't wanna say something that's not correct.
Well, they should be going forward with the design plan because they got that, uh, capital, uh, budget revisal.
Yeah, they got a big amount of money.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the design.
Yeah, and I think they're looking now at not doing those portable buildings like we originally, they originally talked about. It's gonna just be, I think they're looking at trying to just build a facility somehow, so a little bit different design too, it sounds like, so. Anyway, that hopefully will come up, uh, soon. What else? Trying to think of any other big items that, I think that's it. Any questions? Uh, Be That, anything from Be That?
He's not here.
Solid Waste Advisory Board.
She's not here.
No, everybody's gone today. If you come, tonight, no school board.
No report.
Uh, TRPC?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, for TPB and TRPC, we're at the time of the year, we're, we're basically just closing everything out. Getting final approvals for the comprehensive plan and that kind of stuff. We expect through TPB and TRPC to have, uh, a base idea of who is going to, uh, be the next director for TRPC.
Do they have some A minor?
We've had a lot of, a lot of people that, that apply for it. We, it's been narrowed down to six, I believe. And by the end of the month, we'll have a new director.
That's good. That's pretty quick, it seems like.
Yeah, and for TPB, uh, I, I brought it up at the last council meeting, or was it the study? Either one.
I think it was Ste- Steady.
Yeah, I think it was Steady. Where, uh, we're, we're looking, we're getting to that time of the year for new officers. And there's a couple of civilian seats that are gonna be opened up, so we're looking for somebody for those as well.
For next year.
Yeah, for next year.
Very good. They're gonna miss you out there, John.
No, they won't.
That's gonna be a big change.
It'll be a change, but they won't, they won't miss me. It'll be one of those, shoo, sit here.
Uh, I think they'll miss you. Uh, Thurston County Commissioner's Office, uh, I haven't heard much, you know, everybody guessing knows here's all the latest on the budget with the counties, just like everybody else, so they're.
They're having great fun with that budget.
Well, just like everybody else.
No, we don't have lawyers who can, they can mess with us. They do.
So hopefully they'll work through that. I'm sure they will get through it. It sounds like they purchased that property down there downtown, so.
Yeah, looks like it. That was a good buy.
Uh, legislature, that's be nothing.
I'll probably start up.
Starting up again.
I'll probably start up the day after New Year's. Well, I don't even know when it falls this year. It'll be the mon, it'll be the closest. The week before the regular session and the regular session starts the second Monday of the month.
This is a long one, Mary. This is a long section.
This is a short one. This is sixty days.
Short one? I think it for some reason.
No, I wish it was a long one. I like the long ones. I'd be big money.
Yeah.
And she likes the short ones.
Cause you have your partner down there with you more often? Uh, that's all I have. Is there any other business anybody wants to talk about? Questions?
I think you did really well. Time is a sin after.
Yeah, we got twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes.
Actually, yeah. Uh, I've brought it up with TRPC. I've brought up with TPB. If you actually look around when you're driving, I've noticed, and it might be because I have my second e-bike. But I'm seeing a lot more e-bikes and a lot more scooters floating around. Uh, one of the things that, for example, the hill, the hill on Fourth Street. Is that, oh, yeah, we got a bicycle lane there so people can ride to work. Yeah, they're gonna ride to work. But all those bicycle lanes that they put on the side of the streets there, those can be used by e-bikes for the most part, quite easily to get back and forth to work. The problem is, is that, uh, those two in particular, that's twenty five miles an hour. There are a lot of places in, in, uh, North County and down here that are thirty, thirty-five miles an hour, forty. And e-bikes that don't need to have a registration can do those speeds easily. Okay? We have two sets of rules for our streets, well, three. We got state roads, we got county roads, and we got our roads. What I'm proposing, cause I'm not gonna be here next year, maybe you guys will, will take this up, is to look at the, the few streets that we have and allow e-bikes to at least be able to not worry about doing the thirty, thirty-five miles an hour out here without getting a ticket.
What thirty-five mile, there is no thirty-five anywhere in town.
Here it is.
Just before you get into town.
Oh, way out. It's out quite a ways.
It's, it's about a half a mile to, before you get to my house, it, it's thirty-five.
Really?
Yeah.
Changers right by my house, yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, to at least let them, let, let people, if they have those kind of e-bikes, that they can do that. Okay? Uh, around here, it's not as critical, but especially in North County, it really is.
No, I wouldn't ride an e-bike in North County.
See, and, see, that's, you know, and, and that's, that's fine, but you gotta remember also, I'm different. E-bikes for me that go that fast, I shouldn't be able, should, I should be afraid to drive those, but I don't. I feel very safe on an e-bike doing the speed limit because I know the people behind me have to do the speed limit as well. I've got turn signals. I even have a rear view camera on my car, on my bike, so I can see cars that are coming up behind me. Okay?
Okay.
Need to sell driving bikes, what they need.
No.
Actually, believe it or not, there are some out there. They're, they're prohibitively cost, but there are some out there. But, uh, you know, bump, allow people to have those, the, those that can do that speed limit to be able to do that.
Well, I don't think anybody's stopping them.
Well, not here.
Well, that's all we have to worry about is here.
Yeah, well, that's all we have to worry about.
But on the county level, whoever's on the TRPC.
Yeah, and I've already, I've already been talking, I've talked to them about that. I talked to Wayne about that. I've talked to Andrew Barkus about it, so. And to me, it's one of those things that if the state won't allow something like that, so people that are responsible can, can use those to go to work because a whole lot is expensive. But they're trying to force everybody to buy e-cars, the electric cars. What's the difference? You know, you're gonna let an e-car do the fifty-five, sixty miles an hour and whatever the speed limits are, why not allow the e-bikes to do the same thing? This way people can use them to go to work and it's a lot less expensive. And they don't have to have endorsements for, for motorcycles and all that kind of good stuff. And the ones that can do highway speeds, you gotta register those.
They'll probably make you register.
No, they, they, they are registrable right now because they come with VIN numbers.
Do they charge you like a motor vehicle tax like you do on a car?
Yeah. So just something to bring up for, for the future. Cause these are our roads for the most part. But what, what, what would, what would be nice is by, the next bike that I think I wanna get will get me from here fifty miles an hour over the hill into North County.
It's pretty amazing. They're very technious.
But I can do the speed limit.
I'm gonna stay off the highway if I know you're off there. Let me know when you, when you're gonna go.
Fifty miles an hour on his bike?
Yeah.
But, but that one's, that one's actually a bike that has to be registered because it doesn't have pedals. But we're, we're forcing people, and they, to me, the, the big difference is when I was young, I could do fifty miles an hour on a bicycle, no problem, on a ten speed. If I spend four thousand dollars, thirty, four thousand dollars on a, on an e-bike that can do that speed limit, what's the difference? They never stopped me because I was, I was doing the speed limit before. I'm doing the speed limit now. What's the difference?
I need one with training wheels. Do they make them with training wheels?
Yes.
I'm gonna go fifty miles an hour once.
Yes.
I got afraid on a tricycle. I did. And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, my daughter bought me one and I sold it.
See, it's, it's just like, uh, it's just like the Teslas. A lot of people my age and older are afraid of those cars. But those cars aren't for my generation. They're for the next generations that are coming up. These ease, these e-bikes, they, they have, so that a five-year-old could start and they go about five, uh, and it's four to five miles an hour. And as a child gets a little bit older, gets a little bit more responsible, they can increase the speeds on them and they get them the next level up. So that, that's where all this is going.
Kids won't have to ride a bike anymore, even if they just e-bike it.
Yeah. Just wanted, just wanted to get that out there.
Far, far as I'm concerned, allowing that, we're just, we're just creating more and more and more and more lazy kids.
That's what technology does. Look at AI.
Yeah.
They don't even have to do their math anymore.
Don't have to do homework anymore. They're special back there.
How awful.
You talk to your computer, hello, computer, figure the South Park, and it will talk back to you, just like in Star Trek.
Not me. How about you, Joyce?
I'm not riding a bicycle anywhere.
I know, but your computer. He said he has, they have computers you can talk to and they'll talk back to you.
That's not gonna happen to me.
I had a trip.
They're not gonna wanna hear what I do.
I had to close.
People say, who is this?
I had to close this because they kept picking you guys up. I was just about to respond.
Okay, got ten minutes. You need to go take a stretch or charge less than the bike.
I mean, to get this over with, so I go.
That will be.
I'm at, I'm at, right now with three bars.
Get nice and warm.
So mine will do about thirty.
Tomorrow night, tomorrow night, the game starts at five o'clock.
Ideal optimal conditions. You're using the pedal assist and you weigh a certain amount, you got packing on a whole bunch of stuff. So whenever they say they can do this much, I can.
No, I, I think they're a good team.
So I can actually.
I thought they lost their mind last night and put hand hawk in there.
No, the one that I bought because of the battery.
It's not called a closer, it's called something else.
The speed drags a lot, so it'll do about.
What's the, what's the last pitcher in the game it's called?
So if you go all the way to the family, like you were saying. I can go there, roll around and come back and have the charge.
And, wake up. What's the last?
Same where you charge it.
What's the last?
But the other thing.
Pitcher in a game called, not the closer, called something else.
But, uh.
It is the closer is one, like they need a seal picture.
Right, but what's the call?
I can use a charging station.
Not called, it's called something else.
Oh, you can?
Oh, okay.
Cool, huh?
Yeah.
I know that.
How many can use the car?
Yeah, they have, we might sell it to seven miles an hour.
Really?
I don't want one of those. Fifteen hundred. But suddenly.
Well, the guy that had it there on the side, hand hawk was terrible. I thought for sure.
The bike that I have now, I'm gonna take it out. And that, the speeds that can, it'll be thirty.
No.
Like full truck, thirty miles an hour.
Right.
I'm at, uh, I'm at twenty-nine now.
I guess ours is the relievers.
String down.
I know, but I can't.
Get a little less mileage.
There is, no. I can finish this, the game is the, is usually the closer unless you have such a big lead that you don't need to worry about it.
You talking about a relief pitcher?
No. No.
You can go home, go on YouTube and look up a few bucks.
I can watch.
Yeah, we're so.
Oh, yeah, thank you, everybody. Oh, yeah, thank you, everybody.
What are the price ranges?
I do have something to say. I don't have a gal.
Me either.
I do have something to say.
What's up, Linda?
Joyce is having a huge sale, started last Saturday. She's open from ten in the morning to eleven, uh, to seven at night, oh god, eleven. Uh, for the next, up until next, through next Sunday, and it's ten to sixty percent off of almost everything in the store. There.
Biggest sale I've ever had in eighteen years.
And I've got all my suits, so I can be Santa.
You gotta go to Joyce's place and be Santa?
Excuse me?
You gotta go to Joyce's place and be Santa?
That's a good idea.
Maybe at Christmas?
It's up to, it's up to her.
Why not?
Yeah?
Yep, yep.
Just don't say town, go tonight, I'm.
People come and take your pictures. We could put a big chair right in that doorway outside.
And you can have people taking pictures.
That's a good idea.
That's an idea.
I don't, you know how the Santa suits always have those little vinyl things that just slip over your real shoes?
Yeah.
I got real boots. I got the boots.
So, I just looked up, like.
It's like corporate, I think it's called, don't call it.
Comprehensive plans and like all that stuff, just cause.
You ask AI, you can just ask AI?
Well, that's kinda what I did. I just Googled it. Google has like that AI that automatically features. And, yeah, Thurston County is technically, a county that has, has to have their whole comprehensive plan in by.
End of the year.
The end of the year, this year.
Yeah.
Just Thurston County.
So, I don't know, but, okay, so that's where, that's where I'm not totally sure about differentiation between.
Comprehensive plan.
And county.
Yeah, who told you?
He just pulled it up on, through AI.
No, I mean, who told you it didn't have to be finished any day?
So this is what I remember. I'm sitting in Joyce's chair, and I'm like, okay, uh, they invited me to continue the public hearing. I said, okay, well, if we're gonna continue the public hearing, can somebody confirm to me that we have enough time to still pass this by the end of the year? And they're like, that's not a concern, it doesn't need to be.
That was Christian.
Who told you it was a concern, was it, are there?
Melissa.
Melissa's our planner, that comes to all planning issues.
As long as we would work, as long as we maintain us.
Yeah, as long as we are, you know, just sitting, I do.
Yes, that's what I got, I don't want you to say.
Okay, that may have been, okay, so that's a, that's a good point that I might have missed, yeah.
You can't just be sitting there doing nothing and just saying you're not gonna.
I would still like to, I would still, I'm gonna look the RCW up, I'm still interested. I wanna, I wanna get it from a horse's mouth.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway.
Okay, thank you very much.
Come on, have a good day.
Good job, Adam.
Joyce, or Lynda.
I'm Lynda. Oh god. You know, that's hilarious, cause a lot of people do that.
It is a closer or a relief.
It is, it's, it's usually the best relief player. The closer is usually the best relief player that they have. Well, they didn't have that last night. It wasn't a good relief player.
But they did last night.
Yeah, they did, and they were, they were like ten, they were eight points ahead, and that's probably why they did that, but. I could just see it all falling apart, which is so typical of staff.
I'm still sweating when they're, yeah, when they're at seven, right at my coat.
Go on YouTube.
Yeah, anything could happen.
Especially when you walk all those people, I say.
So the Seahawks won, and the Mariners won, so we're in good shape. Now, the win.
And the Beavers won.
Oh, did they?
I think, I think the Beavers.
And.
Yeah.
Oh, he's, he's doing something else.
He's AI and something.
You can call the speed limit? They'll take it.
Hey, Dan, are you with us? How much, how, how much did the Beavers win by?
That I don't know, but I know that my Cougars only lost twenty-four, twenty-one to Fort Franklin Miss down there.
I love that they're gonna pull it off.
You don't know how much, you don't know how much the Taino, Taino Beavers won, but you know how much.
Oh, the Beavers, four and forty-two to nothing.
Thank you.
I like to talk about Oregon State.
No.
So they're six, they're like six and one now? Five and one, six and one, five and one?
Five and one, yeah. Rochester's also five and one, and they play at Monty next week.
Rochester, Rodchester plays in Monty?
Yeah.
That's your BS, yeah.
Well, Rochester hasn't lost a league game yet, though.
No. Well, no.
Monty, Monty usually has a pretty good football team.
They beat Taino forty-nine to nothing.
Yeah, they're, to, Monty did, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
Rochester, Taino for the second.
Got a bunch of farm boys.
Fast.
Seriously.
A lot of long touchdowns against Elmo, who they beat sixty, sixty-two to eight for their homecoming. Everybody says Elmo for their homecoming, because Taino beat them forty-two to nothing.
My poor, my poor great-grandkids. I've got, well, only one left there, I guess, Kane. The other ones are all graduated.
Yeah. The Eagles gave up six touchdown runs with more than, uh, more than sixteen yards, up to seventy.
You're getting close.
I know, thank goodness.
Four minutes, Joyce.
One, one game in a touchdown, right?
I'm Joyce.
Holy, I see she's got nothing.
For one.
Yeah, Dave just called me Joyce.
Well, when you think about it, you don't have to have insurance. You don't have to have an endorsement. So you're saving. Oh, that one, yeah, that one's a lot. That's the one that I'm looking at.
Are you too warm?
That's the M one night.
Are you too warm? No, I'm good, no.
We've had some trouble with our heating.
I know.
When it was, when it was warm, it was ice cold, and now that it's cold, it's, I, it's so hot, you can hardly stand it.
It was seventy-seven in my office.
It was sixty, yes.
Oh my god.
It was sixty.
When, when I was in the other day, it was colder.
So, even though it comes with VIN number, you don't need insurance.
But they turned it over to heat, now it's seventy-seven.
I don't understand why you can't renovate it.
That's what I told him. He can't even figure out how to run the system, the guy, we're gonna call Sunset Air, cause they're the one that put it in, and see if they can figure out.
And when you start looking at catch, especially if you use it as a commuter.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause the person who's in the house is like, they're extreme changing, but it doesn't seem like.
Well, it's not, not a seventy-seven degrees.
Maybe you just get a manual, which helps how to operate it. Don't have to have Sunset Air, go do a service call, and just have, see if we get a manual.
I'm retired, I find, I've been learning a lot through, uh, YouTube.
Did you look in the file to see if you had a manual?
I was, we've all been around.
Change, it takes a change drastically.
I see it's probably in public works in place, you don't wanna go in there and try to pull it out.
Well, I wouldn't think so. Hey.
If you're too late.
Uh, listen, there's a session about where.
Every point.
Couple minutes.
Might be a rotation, but it actually would fail, you know, every once. Yeah, that's true. Would you insurance?
You can, we never answered my email or my voicemail.
We used to have a strainer that came in.
I didn't know you left me voicemail. I didn't even look. I saw that you called me, and I tried to call you back. Oh, got him sucked up three of them.
I'm sure, I said, that's right. When I first got on account.
It's only seventeen seconds, so it can't be much.
So they put on there, cause my, what I've always done is work as a book collector. So they put Bill, B I L L.
It's kind of funky.
So it's on the new guy, he wouldn't have talked to me, and if you're doing, if you, so they called down there, and I.
It's good, there, it's got like the swat on it, a little dissection on it, or something.
Is it ruined, or does it just go by Bill?
No, I've got on it. I've got that corner cabinet on, a price on it.
It has a price of you and me. Has jail on it.
Well, then that's what we're selling, the passage jail.
It's called a Evioki.
Sure, we're not.
And the technology that's booked into that.
Well, then buy it for me.
Just astounding.
You can buy me out.
You phone up to it, and listen to whatever music that you want, or whatever, as you're riding along.
Well, then you, you, you get, whatever you do, it's fine. I don't care. I don't care.
She has the whole nine yards in there.
You know me.
I mean, it'll do forty-five easy, not, without breaking sweat.
You ever take it out, like, the ring?
I haven't yet, but they're, they're all, all at the point now, where you can take it out, the ring, it's not a problem.
Okay, it looks like it's seven-thirty, so we will start the regular meeting of the Taino City Council for Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and all the press for the Black suit.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on is agenda approval?
So moved.
And seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Uh, I do have another consent calendar, excuse Elaine Clam, she called today, she has pneumonia, so she won't be here. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, uh, we have the minutes from.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent calendar, and I'll just make a note on this, since we didn't have a meeting last time, I did a separate, they asked me what we should do, so we have a separate one for September twenty-fourth, the meeting we didn't have, and then October fourteenth, so I'll read both of those. The consent calendar for September twenty-fourth consists, twenty twenty-five, consisting of payroll EFTs in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents. Claims checks numbers three-three-five-nine-seven through three-three-six-two-three in the amount of ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-one cents, for a total of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, consisting of payroll EFTs in the amount of seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Claims checks three-three-six-two-four through three-three-six-six-nine in the amount of seventy-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and five cents, for a total of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents. No liquor and cannabis license, and then excusable of, uh, Elaine Clam.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, presentations, public comments. Uh, this is a chance for the first public comment. There will be another at the end of the meeting. Do you have something, Joyce?
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah, you might as well, you're here.
Okay. So I'm Joyce Worrell, owner of the, of the Ironworks Boutique in downtown Taino here, and so just a heads up then, I was not gonna do this, I didn't come here to do this, but anyhow. Uh, we brought up at our chamber board meeting that, um, I've noticed through the years, people come into my store and throw trash, want me to get rid of their trash in the garbage cans, there's no trash cans. So the chamber decided that we would start doing something to, how much do, uh, trash cans cost? Could we do an art project? So if there were a couple of trash cans along the street that people could utilize, then there would be an art project that maybe the high school kids could do. So all I'm saying to you is that that's a heads up to the city, that this is a possibility of coming up. And, um, as a business owner, I believe it's very necessary that there be some trash cans, to put trash cans along the street instead of them throwing into the gutters and underneath our benches.
It's a great idea. Nice, you see a lot of cities that have it, so that would be great, if we could do something like that.
Okay, and again, I didn't plan on doing this.
That's okay. Old business, there's no old business. Uh, the only other item we have is new business. This is called the First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement for Law Enforcement Records Management System. Uh, and talking to Maria today, uh, seemed like approximately three years ago. They added, if you look at the bottom of the first page, they, they added Thurston County Sheriff's Office to the list of, of, of agencies. It was signed by all the agencies, and they just discovered we had not, we had not signed it after three years. So now they're going back and having all the agencies re-sign this proclamation. So it's something we've been doing for three years. Nothing's changed on it, we just, we, they have no record of any document with our signature on it, so we need to approve this, and I will sign it and have our attorney sign it.
So the checks that we've been signing up for payment, they don't have those signatures on it?
Yeah.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement that we missed the signature on. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, I will sign that, uh, and get it to our attorney for signature. Uh, I think we got all the reports, there's no resolutions, uh, second public comment. Joyce? Did you think of anything else?
You put a wonderful thing that Edward Jones did.
Wasn't that great? We talked about that. I thought that was great also, the, yeah. That's a, it's a beautiful building, and I told her, makes, when you come into town, it just makes it pop, because you don't just have that empty lot there that, you know, is kind of overgrown, and just having that nice landscaping and building there really is, uh, kind of improves our, as you come into town.
And people gave that to my store afterwards.
Oh, did they?
Vivin', yeah.
Oh, sweet.
Great.
That's good. That's great. Yeah, I didn't realize they had so many clients, I forget how many, they said how many clients they had, it was a big amount, remember?
They have a lot, a lot of people. Where they, when Conklin came there, he brought all his clients there, and then they closed on Edward Jones in Naperville, was it?
Yeah, I think it said Naperville.
And they, those people came to, to Taino, so.
So, like I said today, when we were talking, it's, just as much as the building, it's the work they've done in our communities to help us out with so many things, and just the services they provide to citizens of our community and beyond, is, you know, to me, is bigger than the building itself, really, so. I know he's been very active in, in Taino for many years, so.
Yeah.
Okay, no public, other public comments?